Taking motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
We'll make that motion.
All right, all favor I?
All right.
Post. Carry. Rich, good morning.
How are you? I had a pre-con last Friday with Dixon Construction on doing three ninety street bridge and. They they inform me they'll have it done before the snow. But as far as when they start, we have this window between. August, September, October. They really aren't sure yet when they're moving in. But it'll be this year, they said, so well, and that's all. It sounds like. So what about winter? Well, we find out having a before winter, so we'll see how it all plays out. This bridge is a concrete beam bridge, so. They may be, because these are tied with Mitchell County also. They might have two two. Both bridges same time and then. Since we're the administrators, I I made Worth County administrator for both projects, which doesn't really mean much to you guys. So anyway, that's that. And then Wednesday will have. Tell tap people coming up looking at.
What time is that one?
That's, I think, ten thirty, I think. Did they notify you at all? Usually they try to have a little, I, what I was told was they try to have a local people there, but they'll have ISP and. Couple engineers from Aims and. But they don't call you.
Ten thirty. Yeah, yeah.
BMC is gonna start rocking, you know, Martin area is gonna start to rock. South central part, I think, whatever.
They're coming out of Mason, because they haven't done, they're down out here, right?
I can't remember how many, yeah, yeah, they're not producing anymore out here. I just can't remember how we got, how many zones we have, how many? We have five, we have five territories, I think, that we hold out.
Yes, they're done in my area, I'm pretty sure.
Whatever's closest to Mason City. That's what they're, I'm sure, that area, so we'll start today.
Keep everybody safe.
And we have a, we we talked about two also, maybe. Relaying the covert on highway one oh five before, you know, we talked about it when they closed the pavement down. But we don't want to run into some problems where we're holding the contracts. We might. We don't know for sure yet, but we might try to stage it. We're gonna do half a lane at a time and try to keep them all before they come into pay. So we've got a plan of place that the concrete pipe don't want to lay down very well. We've got.
The paper is full with.
Elliot must have, or somebody one called that covert there. Looks like so he must be thinking about it, being as painted on the road, so I assume they won't call that over. Getting ready, so.
Okay, any else? Right, thank you. Drainage, city claims, but I did see a revised.
Um, we had to do a little revision because I hadn't paid the. Uh, right of way for DD, ah, I'm going blank now, too much fresh air. Oh, which ones were those? Some, the ones that we classified, reclassified, like DD two. And there were some other ones, so there was like fifty thousand dollars that. Luckily, we caught it before we assessed, because that it would have been bad to catch it later and then go, oh, yeah, by the way, we need to reassess you again, so. Um, it's, it's ready to go and that that should be the final one.
We need a motion.
Approve the revised twenty twenty one drainage assessments.
I'll make that a motion.
Hit, for a second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? You're no favor I? All right, opposed? Right, that motion will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, good catch.
Okay, no claims, or yeah, there's. Any questions or concerns of the planes?
Nope. Motion for the plane.
Okay, is motion or second?
I'll second it.
All right, all favor I? Well, not see any reports. But I do see a salary change. For Ricky Anderson and Sheriff's Office, so the emotion to prove the salary.
I'm like a motion.
Right. Discussion. You're none, all favor I? All right, opposed? Carry. No liquor licenses. Request funding from US Treasury, American Rescue Plan funding. It looks like we got a paperwork in order, we basically just need to give the board chair permission to sign documents to receive. This funding, when it's available.
Resolution or just a motion?
Just a motion to allow me to. Sign the documents for the. For the.
There you go, I'll make a motion, allow you to do that.
All right, any discussion on? You're none, all favor I? I oppose, motion will carry, I will send those second meeting. So online or e-signatures. Uh, John Colby, was he coming in today?
He's coming in, I believe, I don't know if I told him nine o'clock or what, he wanted to be on to talk to us more.
All right.
We'll see, go through everything else.
Um, then with that code. Was down with people service, Chris.
Can I keep my report?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any questions?
Any concerns?
Um, no, uh, I talked to Jason Friday and he was gonna present the report today, I think. Water tower. So I was asking for the pictures. Needs to ask if I wait till Monday. And the salt valve and salt tank, I don't know if I told you last month or. Salt valve and the salt tank quit, so we suck all the salt out of the tank, went refill it, we replaced that.
Okay, is that our generator on the corner there? Yeah, I've seen you pull in there before. So I don't know if Mike sprayed weeds, but there's some ragweeds around there, I don't know who does or. Any lawn care or weed control around there, there's some weeds going around there.
We do right around lift station, but they're more in the ditch, so.
Yeah. Okay, I just noticed around.
The week guys, it's their Saturday, but rain time, so I don't know if you get anything.
Ah, he did spray, the the ditch alone has been sprayed, they were tipped over, I know, this morning.
Rain, rain, when I got there, he was out there, I don't know, he just got done spraying, he was gonna spray.
He might have done it right afterwards, because they are tilted, it looked like to me, so, yeah, okay, I just curious, I thought that was ours, so. Yeah, why don't you, I mean, if he wants to swing by there and zap them just to their day, look a little nicer.
That's what was that kind of all got tore up anyways, it probably reseeded, didn't it?
They cut right through the gravel, if you don't, you know, it's on the backside of generator, nobody drives, it just, it just come off. Either pull them or kill them, I mean, that's all you can do.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't see Jason on, so.
Next December present Monday, I just think it's this day.
Right.
No, I've got to call him anyway, so I was asking about it. When the last time I did talk to. Yeah, I was, I was going through, looking through everything over, so. Is any questions, Chris?
Things are going smoothly.
Yeah, okay. Jump back up, John, if you want to come on in. You can grab that chair right there.
Yes. Morning, how is everybody? Thought that, uh, kind of took the. Comments you guys had plus other comments and to simplify this thing. Instead of trying to, and it causes problems with the, with the bank and and the role of revolving loan fund. Just do a straight sale. Okay, now this is where the creative part comes in, there's always a, you know, something. But we'd still do the one sixty nine, so it's full, full ask, sixty percent cash. Which leaves a balance of sixty seven thousand six hundred. And instead of paying that off over. Eight years paid off over six. And it would be on, here's the, you gotta think about it, but it's, you're pretty solid in this, in that. It's unsecured non-recourse, which allows the bank to go, great, go ahead, because they, if anything went wrong. But let's say day one, the thing just flopped, whatever, which isn't gonna happen, but. How does the county feel like they got the fair thing? Because we're committing to put over four hundred thousand dollar building on there, if you figure the taxes in. Over six years now, I'm sure it's the same here, as I ran in a couple other states, I think it's a nationwide thing, banks can sit. With a foreclosed asset and not pay the taxes for some period of time. But they eventually have to pay the tax. They gotta bring it back to current, so. The option you have is. You know, nothing happens there, or go ahead and accept that deal, it's a straight, straight sale, makes it simple. And know that either by my payments and we're successful, or. By the back taxes coming in, you've gotten the one sixty nine out of it, plus then. After six years, you got all that revenue coming in from taxes. So I put the salt. Those two that way. There. Or yeah, and then lot two, what I did on the. The options, instead of stretching them out, I shortened those up, and I said lot two would be under the same terms within four years. And lots, three and eleven would be five years. And that would be it, so it doesn't, it doesn't tie it up, but I think it gives us enough time to to execute what we want to do. And that's in there as well, so.
Email Jeff and Melissa email Jeff, we're turning, he said we can kind of do. As we feel necessary with.
Process, yeah.
We still have to jump, go, it's just a jump through, go through the entire. Process, if we get it to certain points, but. I guess that's a decision we'll have to to think about. And maybe revisit again. Next week, if you guys want, or whatever. It's up to you guys, so.
Yeah, timing wise, just, so I kind of know is. Uh, what, as you see that process, how long is that?
As far as.
What consummating transaction, so you'd start construction.
Gotta do the.
Do you have the blueprints made up of the building?
Donnie has them, Don Helderson over at Lake Mills Lumber is my brother-in-law, so he's got them over there. So it's a pole frame building and. It's got the garage doors all along the one side, plus the two ends.
Kind of like what you're showing here.
Yeah, it's, that's the style of the building, but it's literally the one side is just. It's doors that open up.
Right.
You know, it's, it opens. When the weather's good and everything else, plus from a safety standpoint, people will. I don't know how anybody couldn't get out of that building, you know, it's just two seconds flat, so. From there.
And you figure you'll have four hundred thousand in the building?
Over four hundred, yeah.
But then, slightly. More in the parking lot and stuff.
We'll have to do that, and I guess if you can give us, you know, a little time to get that all worked out and everything else, and of course, that depends if we're doing. Phase two, which we hope to do, because then we'd have an integrated plan for landscaping and everything else, so. Obviously, we want that whole thing to look, you know, really sharp and stuff.
Yeah, I just found the email here, it said that, yeah, I think lease greater than one year require public hearing and resolution proving the lease.
So this would be slightly different, it's not, but it'd be basically the same person.
It's, they're still a.
Yep.
There's still a lease, partial lease, so, yeah, still, we still have to go through that.
Would it be considered a lease, or would it be considered?
It'd be a contract. Big contract with D, basically, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would call it.
Well, here's the unique part, the deed gets released because it's not secured. Because the bank has it, but other than that, it's, it's like a contract for D, because that's what those payments are, so. So from that standpoint.
Yeah, since we have ability to just about anything, there just hopes to be a jump through to make it legal, so we had, regardless, if we had to do a public hearing, I think it's. About almost four days up to twenty days.
Oh, okay.
For public notice, so just figure at least ten days.
Yeah.
Of published public notice, you know, if you got it in. We have to have that on a Friday, if the paper comes out on Wednesday, so you figure ten days after it hits that paper, hits our website. Um, and the bulletin boards and stuff, and then we could do public hearing that. Meeting following.
Right, right.
That timeline, and then, and then we could bring it to, yeah, bring it to, or do the. Make our decision of those meetings, so.
Yeah, and I was wondering, because I got con- uh, concrete lined up. Middle of September towards the end, and then the building will go up middle of September. And they all heads because of the weather, you know, that.
Sure.
It's, but short of that, we could have this up before Halloween, so. That's what we're hoping.
That would be, that should be doable if we can make that thing with the timeframes.
Yeah, sure, I guess August is actually.
Are you still thinking of a food court?
Yes.
Like a craft court?
Yes.
Farmer's market?
Right.
Where's the, where's the supplies coming from in January and February?
They'll come from down south and other places. And obviously, to differentiate the, you know, most likely it'll be, organic's a big deal. For me, I don't care if something's organic or not as much as it is taste. And so if it's really good stuff, that's, that's what we'll do, but the differentiation is, is. Um, there's no permit. Excuse me. Fighting something off this morning, um, that was just the Department of Ag calling, but I already got to the guy who was in charge of this. And he loves it, if you have a raw product, you don't need any permit, so as long as it's not processed, chopped up, anything like that. The minute you take, like, we used apples, so if you got apples, you sell a bushel of apples, no permit needed. You peel the apples, chop them up and make an apple crisp or an apple pie processed. That product, if it's shelf stable, doesn't need a permit to just sit there as a whole, but if you start serving. Pieces of that, now that's where it is, and so we talked and. They're pretty excited about it, because this will be unique and really stick out, so they'll actually come up. Because we'll do a complete training for all the vendors, so everybody has got the food safety certification and, and. Anything else that they want to feedback in and help us and stuff.
Sure.
Yeah.
You done this by Jeff?
Feedback.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah, he won't be back till next Monday.
Well, we can get it to him, and he can look it over.
Yeah, he said email him.
Yeah.
He could look it over.
If he has time, I guess to glance at it, but then we can discuss it again, hopefully maybe we'll hear something by Monday, but. And figure it out from there, which.
You have this email.
Yeah, you want me to email it to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can forward it out.
I think I have yours, but do you have a card or anything?
No, never.
Here, can I give you my email real, oh, my email's on the back? Just shoot me called test or whatever, and then info or whatever, and I'll just shoot this back to you, so you got electronic.
What was your phone number?
Just a phone number.
Oh, you're kidding me? Boy, I'm bad. J E. So JE Colby at the T H E, the Colby Group dot com.
Yeah, we'll send you one out, so then you'll have mine, you can send it to me and I'll push it on to Jeff. He can look it over and then hopefully, except he gets time to take a peek at it, maybe give us an answer, but. We'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next week to discuss again.
Excellent. You betcha. Have a good day, take care.
Forward this to her too, then she doesn't.
Melissa, how you doing this morning?
Pretty good, how are you?
Uh, what's new in your world, Lily?
Uh, I'm just working with some utilities about the couple of prospects at the Manley Terminal. And then we had a Port Authority meeting last week, and we may need to revisit our plan for Port Authority, since one of the prospects. May need a little bit more natural gas, so I have a call into Alliance, see if we could partner with them.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, and we'll need to try to get a meeting together. As soon as we can with the Port Authority, again.
Would you like me to call one ASAP?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Because the prospect did get the blessing from USDA to move their project to Manley.
Okay.
Saturday, so. So, yeah, we can definitely have a meeting and start that discussion and try to get the. Get some engineering work done on what they would need for gas there, so we can get a cost estimate going.
Sounds good.
Any questions for Melissa? All right, um, and then I'll be sending you, John Colby was just in here and, and. Changed this proposal up a little bit, so I'm gonna get that in email form here sometime later on, and I'll push that along to you as well.
Perfect.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, now we're down to, what do you say, any else on any of that, guys?
No, I don't think so.
Now we're down to a security committee's discussion, possible action, required members of committee.
Yeah, our discussion was, we had pretty good turnout, but we feel every department needs to have a representative at the meetings when they have them. And with departments would be, first Joel, the sheriff, secondary roads needs to have a representative, whether it's you or whoever. Sessor, reporter.
Treasure.
Treasure.
Public health.
Janet will be there, public health needs to be there, I think that covers it.
EMA. So I, I think every department except, well, conservation.
Conservation should do. That would pretty well cover everybody.
I think so.
And we thought, I thought we should make it an action.
Do we need clerk court involved with that at all, or not really?
Well, they, they are part of it, but are they?
I think we could bring them in as needed, maybe.
Okay.
Because I mean, having them trying to attend meetings, I know it's gonna be tough on them, so I guess if we, you know.
Their guidelines are always different than ours anyways, so they got that, it's like that portion of the area is controlled, and let's chat, just come through, saying, you know, saying that, they have their own parameters, well. They kind of do, so I mean.
But we have to incorporate those.
Yeah, we gotta work together on that portion, I guess, of just whatever their parameters are, you just throw them in.
Discussion was, is it's just gonna get more demanding going forward, I mean, it's gonna be, so we want everybody there, because to know what's going on.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get any easier. So.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, include those guys, I would for sure, just, they can't make it for some odd reason, then.
That's understand.
Technically work here too, but just under a little different invisible boundary.
Right, so we thought we should make that an action, and. So that's why we brought it to the board, and I guess I'm gonna put that for a motion and all departments that be required to have a representative at the security.
Okay, so the motion is. That all entities, we'll call it, are all. Departments within the county system.
I think the only thing we didn't want, I mean, like recycle center.
Right, we don't, I mean, it's a one-person deal, doesn't really deal with a lot of stuff.
Wow, another question though, too, okay, so we have a recycle center, we also have water and wastewater facility. VA county owns. I guess as long as, when it comes to security, as long as those buildings maybe are always remembered or.
Yeah, it's not like we're locking them all.
Right, you know, but I mean, yeah, we gotta, we gotta take that into consideration too, that we need to.
Secure that.
Keep those.
Yes.
In the loop, as, I mean, as far as like, you know, the employees there, I don't know that it's a huge deal that they. You know, have to come to these meetings or whatever, but at least we gotta remember that, hey, we need to make sure that those locations are also secure. And up to snuff with everything else, so.
They'll have to be part of the plan, for sure, I mean, as we write this, it's well-written going forward, I mean, that's.
Yep, I, I am a guy, I don't want, I don't want to put a hardship on them, just because they have to attend the committee meeting.
Right, they, they will be included in the conversation.
Yeah, so, so, okay, so there's a motion out to all departments, a part of this security committee. Is there a second? I'll second, okay, is there any other discussion on it? There's the next meeting, the September first at ten AM with DOC, so. All right, all in favor I?
All right.
Opposed? That motion will carry.
Like the committee said, it doesn't have to be department head, it just can be.
Any representative, somebody representing that office or that.
Right, and if, I mean, it's, yeah, just to have somebody there at the meeting. Bring back. Bring back their personal perspective, I mean, there'll be minutes and stuff, that doesn't always necessarily. Get everything that people want to see, so.
Whoever should decide that, Mark wants to have him, let him know that he can include them in the Google Drive, with all the documents and info stuff, so. Sounds good, anything else with the security committee?
That was it, I think.
Uh, department heads. Anyone here?
So I did, you wanna go first?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, we'll save the best.
We wouldn't be blessed without you, sir.
That's true, thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. Um, so I did send out the department heads, the cybersecurity resilient survey results, that was based on. The work I did this is a last month. That was, and that was tuned towards election cybersecurity, but you pretty much can say it's. Our cybersecurity posture, so, and I think if anybody wants more explanation on that, or if you guys want to, we certainly can, we can do a closed session sometime. Or I can go through it with you individually, uh, we just can't, you know, get that information out, just because of the security concerns on it. Um, but if you guys have any questions, or draw questions about it, if you looked at it or anything. You know, the, the green is where, you know, the high end, red's low end, you know, that, that bar is where we're sitting right now. Uh, you can see, uh, as far as resources or cybersecurity force or. One guy, so that's, that was the big thing for us, as far as that report goes, we don't have a CISO, we don't have those, you know, CIO. I'm working on multiple.
They'll take me, me, myself and I.
Sometimes, but if anybody has any questions about that, but we're, and then the goal is to to move some of those. Over a little bit, yeah, and I know we've got a meeting with, uh, Mark and I have a meeting with. EMA from Cerro de County and EMA from Mitchell County. And I know we've got a meeting with, uh, Mark and I have a meeting with, uh, EMA from Cerro de County, and EMA from, uh, Mitchell County. To talk about a combined incident, cyber incident response plan, so we're gonna work on those together.
They have IT over, yeah, they have IT guy.
Casey, yeah, Casey just, he just came back, he was deployed for a year.
Oh.
During COVID, he was in. Qatar or something, um, so, yeah, he's been there a couple of years now, and he's, yeah, good kid.
Good kid.
Uh, Winnebago County just hired a new IT.
Yeah, I heard that, man, meeting with those guys, and heard there's, had left, so, then he gets somebody hired.
I'll be mentoring that individual, I mean, he sounds like he's, you know, he's with, he was with the bank before, so, I think pretty good guy. Yeah, I, I was in on his interview process, so, uh, real, real sure.
So just a quick question, you know, we know you work short, I mean, so is there a possibility that two or three counties could share, you know, that need a second person somewhere or another, could be utilized?
We, we, you know, we've talked about that in the past, it's just the logistics and.
But I mean, it would give you a fallback person, where certain days, not, one person wouldn't be on call seven days a week, you know, I mean.
Well, that, that was the nice thing about, um, the prior IT director over in Winnebago County, Eric, you know, when he was on vacation, I would cover for him, and I was. At the office, you know, he would somewhat cover for me, don't say it. You know, the, the nice thing about Winnebago and, and Worth County, you know, we, we very similar systems, software, you know.
You'd have to be that way, it'd have to be similar.
Yeah, yeah, Mitchell County is a lot, quite a bit different than we are, as far as their, their stuff, so, um, yeah, and I probably do plan on sitting down with their new IT director and talking to him about. Doing the same kind of thing.
Okay.
And, you know, there, there, Eric and I did talk in the past about sharing, uh, a secondary, like a help desk type person. At one time, and, uh, it got stopped at a certain county department that wasn't in this county, so.
No, that's fine.
It, it's something that we've certainly been bringing up again, so.
Sounds good. And, um, I can't talk to a couple before the meeting, but, um, with seeing where FEH goes with the building, I'm not feeling comfortable. Going after our toilets this year to replace in the jail, I'd like to push them back and move the transport vehicle up, and go after that this year on this budget. To kinda see, because forty thousand to spend on toilets in there, if we're gonna go into a new building, I'd much rather try to limp along and save that money. Until we have to, um, this week, Thursday, I will be down in training in Mason City with a couple of my guys on radio. Um, and then Friday, I will be here, and Saturday, I will be around, I gotta help the Shriners over at the Brick Fair, so, um, the only other thing I have is. We did get the back door fixed, so, we don't have to put a new door in.
Good.
That's a good deal. Maybe else in Zoom land, it's department head, have any questions or comments?
Looks like Mark posted about the trailer. Orders, everything's fine.
Yeah. That is, oh, uh, supervisor weekly, yes, the only thing I had was, Melissa asked me to come to a winter vet call meeting. She was meeting with Mark from WCTA and John from Heartland over the interchange development. With the proposals from John Colby and this kind of stuff, and what they had come across, so we discussed that quite extensively.
It is that security, security committee, I believe, and, uh, it's a pretty interesting, um, pretty overwhelming. I'm glad there's good people digging into things, because it's way above my pay grade, I'll be honest, but, um, it's, uh, there's gonna be a lot of work. I think, and like Dole and Mark both said, that regulations are gonna keep coming, and they're not gonna get any softer, so. You know, definitely something, if we do a remodel or a new build, or whatever we do here, it's gonna be, there's gonna be things incorporated at that time, we'll necessarily make it easier, but we'll be able to address. Some of our downfalls that we have right now, and, uh, you know, and it's not just physical security, it's, it's way beyond that, so it's, uh, it's quite interesting. See how it goes going forward now, while we do.
The big thing, like I said before, as long as you're moving that stack.
Yeah, a lot of documentation, a lot of, yeah, a lot of responsibility, so, appreciate it.
Yeah, I completely spaced my Port Authority meeting the other day, so I missed that one, but, I had a meeting with another group, uh. That's interesting, they're at the terminal, uh, sounds like a very large agricultural-based, uh, facility, been coming in. Um, so that's where we're gonna reschedule or do another Port Authority meeting for a need of gas, so, with a little luck. They're ready to move, they were gonna build one over in Western Iowa, um, but they've found here was the rail access could take them. Too much larger area than the rail they had over there, uh, over there, and they were just going to the west coast. And if they come here, they can go west coast, they can go east coast, they can go, um, anywhere in Canada, all over the US, so.
And the only thing holding them back is the natural gas.
So is that, there's not enough there, we're gonna have to bring in more, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
So we gotta figure out where, um, suppose that there's a line. Along the interstate, that is a possibility, but I don't think they have the pressure in that line that they need. So we'd have to go back to the Joyce line, I think, tie in there, like the original plan is.
We have the study.
Yeah, so, we've got the study, and what we're gonna do is, we've still got some grant money from the state that we need to use, so we'll take what their specifics are for sure. And have coordinated with that study and see if there's any changes or that expense, what it would cost, at least get it to the terminal area, so.
Sure, so is that guy's name Lee?
Lee, yeah.
Green?
Keewee.
Keewee.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's the manager down at Terminal Park, investor down at the terminal, so. But there is another group, yeah, I'd say with about five, or actually, there's about twelve, almost, five or six different guys, uh, with this other group, so. Uh, that's all I have for, so. All right. Nothing else, I guess, I can take, uh, motion to adjourn.
Don't, I mean, we need to make sure you get on the agenda, it's Farm Bureau Picknicks coming up here in August.
Oh.
August fourth, you thought, I don't know if I've seen the card or not, we're all, yeah, light it to that.
I haven't.
Whether you attend or not, that's up to you, but.
Right.
Yes.
And we need to get on the agenda, we need to, the American Rescue Plan, we need to get different groups.
To start formulating ideas.
Forming ideas of what, you know, whether it be broadband conservation, whatever it is, there's a whole list of them here, we need to get deep. I know we got a lot of committees going on right now, but we need another one, you know, and it's no big rush on the thing, but they need to start thinking about this stuff, they need to start jotting it down.
Each department.
So we can prioritize what comes first.
Yeah. Just a line item action, or line item discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put it in or something.
You're right, we need to, we need to get the committee started, because a lot of counties already done it.
No, very true. All right, well, yeah, I haven't seen that card yet, but if it does, if it is August fourth.
Yeah.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yeah.
August fourth?
Yeah.
I just saw my card this morning, positive, that's what it is, five thirty till seven.
That sounds about right, I'm saying, I know Trish told me one day, it was gonna be, and I, kind of heard off, said the card was coming, so.
All right, add that stuff to the agenda?
Yep.
For next week, then, and. From there, okay, motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor, I, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.